Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our study session. I would like to call this meeting to order, and the time is 5:01, the date April 14th. And we are glad that all of you are here to join us for our study session. This is a little unique. This is our first time we've done a full-blown study session, and we will follow with a regular session on WebEx. Everyone is in their secure little spot and reaching out to us through their little WebEx video or live connection with us here this evening. I would like to read to you a statement in regards to this unique situation. But before I just want to say, this is the first time we've had a WebEx of this nature. So please be, as Helen Hollins mentioned earlier tonight, be patient, and we hope that you will have our grace as well. So we will do our best to present to you the best quality we possibly can this evening. And here is the statement. It's welcome to the regular, and in this case, our study session of the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board. On March 30th, 2020, Governor Doug Ducey announced that Arizona schools would be closed for the rest of the year due to the COVID-19 health crisis. In early April, when his stay-at-home order was issued, governmental functions, including school board governing board meetings, were exempted from the order. So while it is legal to have an in-person school district governing board meeting, our district is choosing to exercise safe social distancing for our meetings by using a virtual meeting platform. The following will be the rules we are using for our meetings. Number one, although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. And I will bring up each board member when we get started, so you will hear and see that they are here. Two, we are meeting by use of WebEx conferencing platform and live streaming through YouTube, which allows for members of the public to view and/or listen to this meeting. You can access the live stream at www.mpsaz.org/live. If you need accommodations, please contact Martha Head at 480-472-0201. She is the Board Secretary and Assistant to the Board, as well as to our Superintendent. Number three, at this time, the Board is taking public comment through an online forum. Forum, you can access it at BIT, that's bit, like BS and boy, bit.ly/mpscomment. Again, it's bit, like you bit off more than you can chew, dot ly slash MPS comment. Submitted comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time during the meeting. All other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. A recording from this meeting will be available to the public via our district's Board Docs online software within three business days of the meeting. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. So thank you. And with that, we will begin with our evening, and I first want each board member to state their names so that our audience can hear and see that you are in attendance this evening, starting with Marcy Hutchinson, our clerk.
Marcy Hutchinson, present.
Jenny?
Jenny Richardson, present.
Kiana? Say it one more time, Kiana.
Kiana Maria Sears, present.
Thank you. Steven?
Steven Peterson, present.
And I should have said, Mrs. Hutchinson, Mrs. Richardson, Mrs. Sears, and Mr. Peterson. I will do better as we move forward. I have such familiarity, I forget to use a more formal name, so forgive me for that. All right, so after this, we will now continue to move forward into our study session, which is on our partnership with ASU, and I will turn the time over now to Dr. Andy Forless.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board and Dr. Lesser. It is my pleasure and honor to dive into a conversation about the partnerships between Mesa Public Schools and Arizona State University. These partnerships are very important to us because of our shared purpose and goal, which is to create meaningful change in the lives of our students and the communities that we have the honor of serving. Joining this evening's conversation will be Dr. Carol Basil, Dean of the Marylute Walton Teacher College, who will share her work in creating the next education workforce. Dr. Randy Mallerwein, Area Assistant Superintendent, will share information about the work being done to support the expansion of inquiry-based learning with ASU professor Dr. Lindy Elkins-Tanton. Mr. Chris Gilmore, Principal of Westwood High School, and Greg Mendez, Principal at Riverview, will share how they are building teams of teachers to engage students in inquiry using the attitudes and skills within the Portrait of Mesa Public School graduate. And Dr. Sean Holmes, Associate Superintendent of Human and Capital Resources, and Mrs. Krista Adams, Principal of Stevenson Elementary School, will share how their teacher associate model is working in tandem with personalized and inquiry-based learning. Dr. Basil is going to kick off our presentation, and then our district and school leaders will follow with stories straight from the classroom and our schools. So, Dr. Basil, we're ready for you.
Hi, all. Hope everybody's doing well. This has been our life fun. We're on Zoom, not WebEx, but we're all getting to be experts at this. You know, a few years ago, when I came to ASU, I've been at ASU now almost four years. One of the things that I recognized from now decades of working in education and in business and other contexts was that here we were as the largest teachers' college in the country, with 6,800 students and 300 faculty and staff, and it was time for us to really start thinking about what the education workforce really could look like. So, next slide, I have to do next slide. We started to look at what's normal today. And what we found was a number of things. That one, what is normal today in schools, right, is one teacher, one classroom. That every parent, every child goes to school two days before school starts and finds out who their teacher is going to be. And they hope, beyond hope, that that teacher, not only as a good teacher, but that teacher is the right teacher for that child. And that that teacher is going to be the one teacher for an entire year that is going to be the right teacher for those 30 kids that happen to be in their classroom. Next slide. Normal number two is the widget teacher. The belief that every teacher is going to walk into a classroom, is going to look the same, be the same, have the same expertise, have the same strengths, have the same understanding of everything that those children in that classroom need to know. Number, next slide. Normal number three is that teacher preparation continues to maintain status quo. We continue to bring teacher candidates in. We believe they are all to be widget teachers. We believe they will all should work with a mentor teacher, and that they could too, should figure out how to be everything that all the collective we knows to every student in their classroom. Next slide. We also know that every one of those teachers has to abide by 174 competencies in the state of Arizona. You have to be good at a lot of things, plus a lot of other things where there's a line of people around my office, I will tell you, that also want us to build in a whole lot of other things into teacher preparation. But what we expect every educator to be, all things to all learners at all times, it just is, it is impossible to do that. The other thing we do is we provide a lot of professional development. We have all spent millions of dollars on professional development, but frankly, this is all done with very limited opportunity for advancement. We've talked a lot about the fact that actually day one for a teacher looks a lot like day 3,000. Next slide. We also bring in a lot of people. First of all, we bring in novice teachers. Next slide. We have paraprofessionals, we have volunteers, we have people who come out of alternative certification programs. We have substitutes. I looked up substitutes. What comes up about substitutes are all these cartoons about substitutes. But these are all folks that we are putting into classrooms who are typically under-skilled or unskilled in hoping that they know 173 different strategies and competencies for all of the children that are in their classroom. Next slide. Normal is often that we believe that learners are widgets, that every learner is the same. So not only do we think teachers are widgets, we also think learners are widgets. We have forgotten PGE, we have forgotten developmental, that every child does not grow, does not learn at the same pace and the same way. Next slide. Normal number eight is that a large segment of our learners are not learning. I would also add that I think there are large segments of learners who are not learning what we hope they could be learning. Next slide. And that these learners have limited access to the adults that they need. Typically, our children, probably all of your children, when your children had needs and when they, you know, whatever that was, or that teacher in that year could not provide everything that that child needed in that moment, we went out and we found tutors, and we found counselors, and we found coaches, and we found lots of people who could provide that kind of support. There are many learners who do not have those same opportunities. Next slide. And finally, we've decided that we have right now an education workforce system that is not working for educators or learners. We have seen a decline of almost 35% of people who are coming into this field. We have seen a tremendous loss of teachers leaving the field very quickly. And frankly, when we look at learners and we look at test scores and all the things by which we try to assess learners, we aren't seeing a lot of movement there. So at ASU, we have partnered with a number of school districts, Mesa being the largest and most robust of those partnerships. Next slide. On something that we are calling the next education workforce. So this is our next normal. And we have this anchor statement that basically says that if we really think about all of the issues that I just described, all the things that we do today that are normal, that if we really, really thought about them, about whether or not those are the best things to be doing for children or for the adults in those classrooms, we may think differently about how we think about not this whole issue of we don't just have a teacher shortage, we don't just have a recruitment and retention issue, we actually have a workforce development problem. So we've built this anchor statement, and we have said that what if we could actually build a new education workforce, a next normal education workforce, that works as teams of educators with distributed expertise who can provide all students with deeper and personalized learning and empower educators by developing new opportunities for both role-based specialization and advancement? So that we come at this from this sort of double-edged sword, saying, look, if we could think about educators, the way that they work, we could change working conditions, we could distribute the expertise so that everybody doesn't have to know everything and work in ways like in many of the organizations in which we all work. They actually could deepen and personalize learning, and they could implement some of the complex instructional strategies that we know are actually good for kids, that frankly, often can't be done in a one-teacher-one-classroom model. And on top of that, could we begin to actually think about this idea of advancement? Next slide. Next slide. So we started to take a look at this and to say, what would it look like if we could actually think about a continuum of educators in much the same way that we also have thought about a continuum of healthcare workers? So where there used to be LPNs and RNs, now we have lots of medical technicians and lots of people that are trained in very different ways for very different technical kinds of opportunities within healthcare, all the way now to thinking about RNs that get a bachelor's degree to those who are able to specialize in oncology or radiology, or whatever that is, whatever they choose, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, and they all work in teams. I can't tell you the last time I saw a doctor, frankly. But they are working in teams, they think about patients in a different way, they are distributing their own expertise. And this is what we start thinking about when we start looking at Mayo and some of these others. Mountain Park is another healthcare organization here that is beginning to integrate healthcare so that the people who need, you know, the right people are around the right, you know, in this case, patients, but in our case, could we have the right adults with the right kids at the right time? Next slide. So this is where we're beginning, and this is what this has begun to look like in a pretty robust fashion with Mesa Public Schools. We start in the middle of this around professional educators. We have used teacher candidates, 120 teacher candidates on teams with other professional teachers across multiple classrooms in 14 schools. We have other schools that are beginning to be whole school models that are thinking about what would this look like if we weren't just a grade-level team in a school? But what does it look like if we could actually become a whole school model? We are training teachers, we are training people who now are becoming lead teachers. So on the leadership side, we are working with school leaders to think about what this means for leadership. How do you manage teams? How do you look externally for others who can fill in gaps around expertise? And on the left side, around community educators, we are thinking about new roles, new technical assistance roles. Some of those may formally be paras and aides and volunteers and other people who are paid or unpaid, but that these are people that we are training, that we are scaling up to make sure that they have places where they are most needed. And we have really taken this on as an urgent need, given our current situation, because we believe that given the learning loss, which we know is occurring, we're very concerned about it and really thinking about who these people are that could help build teams along with professional educators and leaders to actually start to think about what this could look like for kids. So all of this is happening. We are writing grants, we have already started in some cases. But these teams, so next slide. We basically then are saying, who are the learners and what adult expertise do they need? And so we begin thinking about where's the technology, who these people are, who are the community educators, who are the professional educators who are leading? Who's the lead teacher who now learns how to lead a team across multiple classrooms? And how do we do this in a way that is both cost-neutral and looking at those financial models? But it has been really interesting, particularly as we add teacher candidates and others, to think about what this can look like and what expertise they bring. Next slide. And so we're beginning to see lots of different kinds of groupings, lots of ways that people are now thinking about how to work with kids. Next slide. We see how we begin to think about technology and the idea of high-tech, high-touch with technology, where the technology is being used for what high-tech can do for kids around competency. But teachers and others and humans are being used to actually get to a point of thinking about what deeper and personalized learning looks like as we think about other ways that kids can be grouped and adults can be built around groups of kids. Next slide. We are working together to provide all students with deeper and personalized learning and support. So this is going on at the same time. There are a number of other things going on. And Andy, you're going to talk about a few of these.
Thank you, Dr. Basil. Here you will see on this slide just highlights many of the work that we are doing within Mesa Public Schools that is connected to Arizona State University's commitment to deeper and personalized learning. I'm going to walk you through what this looks like on the next slide so that you can place context of which schools are working on, in which of these areas of programming, grants, and so on. So on this slide, over on the left, you will see the first two columns are really focused on instructional models, looking at inquiry-based instruction that Dr. Mallerwein is going to talk more with us about. And you will see a list of the schools that are really focusing in on what does it look like to expand inquiry-based instruction? The next column is Arts Inquiry and Integration. That is with working with ASU at Mesa City Center. Jake Pinholster is the founder of the Herberger Institute that's coming downtown. Huge interest with Highland Arts Academy, as well as the Harris Poston Junior High, Riverview and Westwood. And Mountain View has some interest as well. Looking at Professional Pathways, which is the program that Dr. Basil just talked about. Those are the 15 schools that are participating within Mesa Public Schools. Moving over to the next column, our competitive grants that we have secured in relationship with ASU. The Network for School Improvement Grant is $2.4 million coming into Mesa Public Schools. It is supporting our six comprehensive high schools to make great matches between students and college and career readiness. The Gear Up Grant is $3 million to Mesa Public Schools, started with Keno seventh graders and will follow them for seven years as they enter in post-secondary education. And then the Schmidt Futures, that was $1 million awarded to ASU for kids to use something called Benji. Benji is what is known as a chatbot, and it uses artificial intelligence to help children work through FAFSA and other financial aid opportunities. And continuing on to that far right, those two columns are the work that we are doing with the Center for the Future of Arizona. The Center for the Future of Arizona is a subsidiary of Arizona State University. We are participating in the Personalized Learning Network. You will see that we have eight schools. Currently, we have secured a $500,000 grant to make this work. We are part of four school districts across the state of Arizona. And then the Beat the Odds Academy is also working to enhance school leadership through what they call the Beat the Odds Academy. Last year, we had 19 of our administrators go through this very rigorous executive development program. This year, we have 12 administrators. So that's the holistic view of the partnership that we have with ASU and how it all ties together around this deeper and more personalized learning in addition to that next education workforce. So Nathan, we can go on to the next slide.
And back to... All of that brings in all kinds of adults, all kinds of new things, all kinds of new people in thinking about what this begins to look like and how we function, how we partner. We spent five or six hours today with Knowledge Works that's doing the personalized learning work for the district. We are beginning to figure out how we can blend, how we can power them, how they can power us around personalized learning so that all of this is coherent and aligned. Next slide. And I just want to end by saying, look, you know, these are our educators. These are the kind of people who are educators. They are not widgets. Next slide. And this is our promise to all of you, that most of you know our brand and our charter that says we are about who we include and how they succeed. And so this is about our students and about our teachers and about how we make sure that they succeed and that we can keep them in the field and that we can do what we need to do and how we use our research to make all of this possible. Next slide. And these are your learners, right? These are our learners. And as we think about all of these kids, and they are also not widgets, and they come into classrooms with so many needs and so much going on in their lives. Next slide. That we need to make sure that we move to the next normal and that we have the next education workforce that can get you to your Portrait of a Graduate, because this is also important for all of us in our economy and our democracy and for equity. And so these become the hallmarks of what we are all trying to do. Next slide. Because we believe every educator should have the ability to develop their own strengths, teaming and collaboration build stronger learning environments, that professional learning should be personalized, that educators should have more opportunity for advancement, that no teacher should have to work in isolation, that every learner needs the right educators, and that learners have more opportunity, more access to the learning supports they need with a diverse group of educators who can meet those needs. And so that gives you a snapshot, and then you're going to hear, I think, stories from other school leaders. But it gives you the big picture of where we are, what we want to do with Mesa Public Schools, where we think we can go and help you to build that portrait of a graduate so that we get those graduates and they can continue on with us and then obviously be terrific citizens in our community. Thank you very much.
Dr. Basil, I will take it from here. I'm Andy Forless, Deputy Superintendent, who's really excited to walk through and kind of guide the conversations that we are going to share this afternoon through our classrooms and our leaders' experiences. So we'll go on to the next slide, Nathan. So I want to talk a little bit about the Arts Inquiry and Integration that began in the fall of 2019. This started with a charrette hosted by Christie and Bob Worsley in the fall of 2019. And we gathered ASU faculty and staff, principals, district leaders, community members, and industry experts around this purpose to explore and envision expressive arts for students in Mesa Public Schools. We've got some great models that are working. For example, Highland Arts Academy is doing an amazing job of really integrating the arts, but they're looking for, how do they go deeper into that personalized learning and really thinking about how this could work beyond a kindergarten to sixth-grade school? So we have talked a lot about what does expansion look like up into the junior high years, as well as into the high school years. So we continued our commitment to learning about one another, about our district, and about this interest in integrating inquiry in the arts. So we have gathered the same team together every month. We need to check in. Some months, we've been better than others, but it's just about every month that we have met to continue that momentum. I really believe that our momentum was accelerated this spring of 2020 when we saw the ground break at ASU at Mesa City Center, right on Main, right across from our district office. And the Herberger Center that is coming downtown is really focused on emerging technology in the arts. And what we are really, what we are thinking about is, how do we use the talent? And how do we use the building, the structures, and the learning opportunity and those resources to deepen the learning of our children as they are thinking about what does the future of work look like? So 3D printing and artificial intelligence, and thinking about what does gamification look like? What does costume design look like in a maker space? And how do kids express and understand what they come to know through the work of a partnership with a K-12 public school system and then a university right across the street? So from here, I am going to turn it over to the next slide. I'm going to introduce to you Dr. Randy Mallerwein. He's our Assistant Superintendent of the Red Mountain Skyline Area, who is going to talk about deepening the work of inquiry, not just with the arts, but inquiry in general. Dr. Mallerwein.
Next slide, please. Madam President, Governing Board Members, Superintendent Lesser, Superintendent T. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. What I'm really going to talk about is really kind of what my journey has looked like as I came into Mesa Public Schools at the beginning of the school year. I was, one of the directions I was pointed in by my supervisor, Dr. Forless, was to get out to the Harris Elementary, learn about the model of inquiry that Mike Oliver has been implementing out there for years. Dr. Forless, I'll just jump right back in. Okay, Madam President, Governing Board Members. So I'm going to start with, hopefully you guys could hear me throughout what I was saying, but one of the things that Dr. Forless had asked me to do was get out to the Harris Elementary School and get to know Principal Mike Oliver and look at the inquiry work. And one of the responsibilities was to look at, in what ways can the inquiry work of the Harris be expanded? And so the expansion of the work that was going on out there that had been going on for a number of years was something that I started to ask a lot of questions about and spend some time out there. And then luckily, I guess in August, I was invited to attend a charrette. I didn't even know what a charrette was, I had to look the word up. But apparently, it's just a planning meeting, so I was like, I can do that. So from that event, I was introduced to Dr. Basil. So from that event, I was introduced to Dr. Basile, who also mentioned Dr. Lindy Elkonstantin, who ironically is is an interplanetary scientist, but she runs an inquiry-based model of teaching at ASU. So through my conversations with Mike Oliver, Mike and I decided to go out there. Mike had obviously already been out there because Mike just takes off with things. And so we went out there one day to have a look, and I just fell in love with the class and how she was interjecting agency and relevancy and complexity and mixing that with collaboration. And that's exactly what I was getting to hear when I got to sit in with the strategic planning team and working through the Portrait of a Graduate. So from there, we started building natural connections across Mesa Public Schools. And I had the opportunity to meet Greg Mendez and Chris Gilmore, who ironically were also visiting Lindy Elkonstantin in class. And we kind of all emerged a little bit and started having conversations and ideating about what can this look like for our students? And what can this bring to the community of Mesa? Because this type of work is bigger than just the value it brings to students. It brings energy and it brings value to adults. And when we bring energy and value to adults, they do a better job with our students. And if we produce two students that can think, we're going to produce a stronger workforce for the city of Mesa. Because we know that about 75% of Mesa graduates stay at Mesa. So the work we do in Mesa Public Schools is obviously going to strengthen the city of Mesa. This was very inspiring to me. It's kind of the work I've always wanted to do in my career. I just jumped into it and started talking to principals and making some natural connections. And then we had a learning day out at the Harris. And I believe Clark Hutchinson and President Miner attended that learning day. Dr. Lindy Elkonstantin was there. Her husband, James Tanton, was there, who's a nationally known mathematics expert. And we were able to see the work that occurred at the Harris. And we invited a number of principals. A lot of those principals were already in the personal learning network. We invited Adam Unright, Casey Eagleberger, Aaron Kazmerik, Krista Adams. And what we were trying to do is look and find out who would be early adopters and who would think that they could move quickly and start to implement some of this and expand the work of inquiry. And whatever that inquiry looked like at their site, we weren't really trying to box people into being just the Harris model. We wanted principals to have the autonomy to say, oh, I think this will work and just kind of get some meaningful work occurring. And so from that, connecting, continuing to connect with Lindy, I started wrapping my head around this exploration of learning concept. Again, providing agency for our students, providing real-world relevancy and then upping the complexity of the work they do to teach them to think. And then obviously, what Dr. Basile talked about, we need collaborators. The future is about collaborators. It's about problem solvers, problem identifiers, creative thinkers. And to do that, we need to collaborate. So I started working with Krista Adams, Jen Lamana at SUSA, Krista Adams at Stevenson, Doreen Brimley at Britton, and a few other principals and just talking them through, what could this look like? What could this, you know, how can we implement this in your school? Can we start a pilot team? And from there, with the work of the principals that I get to work with and Dr. Forless, we kind of came up with a vision of taking the Harris, Stevenson, SUSA and Britton, which are all feeders into Smith Middle School, and expand that inquiry model into Smith Middle School. So then we started to invite Adam Unright into the conversation, got him involved. On what could this look like? Could you do a success team model and inquiry at Smith? So then we connected Adam Unright with Chris Gilmore from Westwood. And Chris will talk later about his success team. So that was a natural connection. And then obviously, I work with Tom Brennan. Tom Brennan was interested in what does the inquiry look like? And I didn't know, but Tom Brennan's child went to the Harris and he's been fascinated with the model for years. So Tom automatically was like, hey, how can we bring this inquiry model? How can I bring some of this work and reading to Skyline? So we started to create this vision of a pathway where our kids can go basically K-12, right through our system, and expand that inquiry for 12 years of instruction and create kids that think, create kids that can make and wrap around thinking and making around the foundational courses that we traditionally teach, which would be English, math in our course, social studies and those courses. Because we need to tap into that human drive to explore. Humans naturally want to explore. And we put kids in rows and we put them in seats and we take away that fire. Well, how can we put that fire back in the kids? Comes back to agency, relevancy and complexity. We have to challenge them. And so this is really have been the work this year that I've been lucky enough to be a part of in Mesa Public Schools. And really, just really, more than anything, I'm a connector. I try to connect principals together to have enriching conversations. So then implementation can occur. And my sense of urgency is great because I can just see the value for the city of Mesa and Mesa Public Schools, the relationship that we have. Doctor, I mean, when I speak with Lindy Elkonstantin, it's the most humbling thing. I mean, she's got two degrees from him or three degrees from MIT and she returns my emails. It's quite a humbling experience. But she is so open and just wants to work with Mesa Public Schools. She comes out to our schools. She's been web, we've been zooming with her and we've been planning what this next this next normal looks like for Mesa Public Schools. And I kind of sometimes say the word new normal, but then what does that next normal look like? How can we solidify this relationship with ASU and build this unbreakable product that's going to help every human being that exists in Mesa? It's going to help parents. It's going to help children. It's going to help business owners. It's going to help teachers. It's going to make where Mesa should be, is the premier public school district in the state because we have the people to do it and we have the program to do it. So that's kind of where I fit in to all this and the work that we've been carrying on. So what I'd like to do now is just pretty much sum this up. We've got a quick three-minute video.
Randy, I think we're going to skip the video for time and move on to Greg. Move on to Chris and Greg when you're ready.
Yeah, I'm great. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to explain the pathway and the connections and where we're going. So I'll turn this over to Principal Greg Mendez and then Principal Chris.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to talk about the work that we're doing with ASU and the work that we're doing with Dr. Basile and Dr. Lindy Elkonstantin in the work at Westwood High School. The wicked problem that we're looking at is ninth grade transition. And we're going to be seeing the success teams that we have developed here that wrap around our students as ninth graders so that they're successful. We understand that our largest risk group is ninth grade students. We want to ensure that these students land at Westwood High School, that they feel safe and that they feel successful in their experience. And again, we also want to look at that as a wicked problem, that one teacher, one classroom factory model. But the big first step that I want to thank you as a board is the Portrait of a Graduate, that just really fuels the fire of what we're doing here at Westwood High School with the things to come with our success team. And the solution, just again, just like Dr. Basile said, is having teams of educators with distributed expertise who can provide all students with deeper and personalized learning. We want to develop small learning communities where students could be known and developed through the strength and need as described in the MPS Promise. So if you go to the next slide, please. Right now, we have three success teams at Westwood High School with the goal of having a fourth one this upcoming school year. We have four teams. They have different themes that we have. And we have approximately 100 students per team. We have an avid team. We have what we know right now as a traditional team. But next year, we're going to have an athletics theme where we take, for instance, all of our freshman football players. And we have wraparound services and support for those football players or volleyball players or other students that are in athletics. We have an agriculture team. Sometimes we call the 900s. They're out there. They do their science through agriculture. But again, we have English and world history and algebra. And this next upcoming year, through the work with the arts integration, is we want to have an arts humanities team. And we have English, biology, world history and study skills. So right now, we have three teachers. We have four periods. That fourth period, which sometimes you might see as avid tutorial or study skills class, that is where we're doing the inquiry-based work. We have our content classes, but that fourth period class is where we're doing inquiry class. While we have those four different periods, the teams work together to talk about how much time they need. The English teacher might need extended time and need two hours. The algebra teacher might need two hours. That's what they do on Monday. So they're basing the need of the education around the students and then the curriculum is wrapped around them. I have some of those content areas. I have like English and biology highlighted. It's my goal next year to use the philosophy of ASU and bring in student teachers to learn the concept of team collaboration, working together as a team. So we're taking that team of three teachers to possibly six teachers around that group of 100 students. Again, to make sure that we're personalizing the learning of our students and ensuring that they're successful in that ninth grade. Next slide, please. So here's the Beagle Inquiry Cycle. And this is just a rough estimate here, but Beagle's learning mission is to build a world of team-oriented problem solvers who could tackle today's biggest challenges and opportunities. We begin by identifying a big goal question, which is in the upper left hand of the picture. A big question to answer or problem to tackle that frames the entire process that the students will be addressing through inquiry or exploration learning for that semester. Students are then given an introduction piece of content that takes a step towards that goal. A kickoff lecture that gives the students enough background information on the big question to awaken the learner and engage their mind. Then the question cycle begins. Students will then begin asking questions that perhaps will lead from the content towards that goal. We call that process the Natural Next Question or NNQ. We then seek the content to help answer the natural next question and repeat the process. Through following the inquiry cycle and discussing it in class, students learn how to work toward solving a complex problem through multiple steps and how to approach understanding content that is outside their expertise, how to productively critique each other's work and how to think critically. The only requirement for this process is the willingness to engage with unfamiliar material, being patient with partial answers to slowly build complex understanding and being open to discussing and questioning ideas in class in a supportive team setting. Next slide, please. I'm going to give some examples of what our three success teams have done. They kicked off this process this past February. The current success teams polled their students about topics they would like to explore. And that was a very strange thing for our teachers because they are giving the ownership of that content to the students and to discuss through the inquiry process. There was one group, for example, they wanted to have a discussion around music. Another success team around digital citizenship and protecting the ocean. But each team then developed a content first based on their big goal statement that would lead the students with questions around the topic. Once again, the heart of the inquiry framework is the idea of natural next question. When you think of the traditional classroom, most questions are what teachers ask. When students ask questions, they're mainly content questions, questions about what the class just read or discussed. We believe that the most important kinds of questions are those that help our students become natural problem solvers and move one step closer to understanding their big research question or challenge. And so you can see in this focus question that this team, they had their big goal statement was how can an artist ensure their music is iconic? Well, the first question was, we have a common understanding of the word iconic. And so you could see there that there's a student-generated definition of iconic, something or someone that of an event that left or has an emotional impact on the world. Next slide, please. You could see that through this discussion, they had next natural questions. They all threw them up on the board. And then the students voted on what their next natural question as a class that they wanted to further research. And that further research question, their NNQ, was how do artists feel mentally and emotionally when they read the song? Next slide, please. Another group, they did the digital citizenship. And this team's big goal statement was generated after debate on how our social media imprint can affect future job possibilities. And this really got under the skin of our students. So they couldn't believe what was posted on social media might have an effect on their future economic gains. But the teachers generated the big goal question as, how can your use of social media affect your present and future? And after a content burst on the topic, the students came up with their next natural question. Again, each student has three votes for their NNQ when they're all displayed. And the NNQ with the most votes will be the NNQ for the students to research for the week. Next slide. And you can see example of all the questions that came up with and the votes. And you can see the winning one was number seven there. How could social media cause depression? And that would be something that they would be researching for the next week. Next slide, please. And they would do different rounds. And after each round, they would vote on the question that they're doing. And the teachers are ensuring that their questions are in line with that big goal statement and that students are researching it. And again, you know, the students are driving the questions. We're evaluating their process. We're evaluating how well of a question that it is. If it's not the appropriate scale, articulation and relevance. Next slide, please. We even had a third group. They asked another great question. How could we preserve the ocean and ocean life for future generations? Again, content first happened. Students put up a lot of questions up on the board. They would have a vote on their next natural question, which they then research for the following week. They would distill all their content and then they would have more natural questions, which they would vote upon and do more research regarding that question. Next slide, please. Just more examples of all the great questions. And again, we're evaluating the questions. We don't want them too small. We don't want them too large. We want to make sure that these are the perfect questions that they are asking in order to answer that big goal question. Next slide, please. You can see the students, they're working as teams. We don't have them work as a huge classroom, but they're working together as teams on individual questions so that they can be productive team members. That requires critical set of skills. They know how to complete the task or meeting, speak in the appropriate amount and always working to allow every person to speak. We ensure that they're keeping the tone positive and knowing what the next steps or actions are. And through this inquiry cycle, we encourage larger classes, again, to break into smaller working groups in which the students share their content summary, help each other improve their next natural questions and discuss the content. Again, next slide, please. You can see other groups of how they're working together on the different questions that they're doing in the class. Next slide, please. And here's an example of an ideal classroom. In our 600s building, we have the team of teachers. And this is three classrooms right next to each other. And during their content classes or their different periods, the accordion walls are closed. So you have three separate classes. But then when they do their inquiry work, they open up the three different classes. See a great example of all the teachers working amongst all the students in their three classes. So it's just a beautiful display of the power of teamwork that's going on here. Next slide, please. We have the students communicating. And luckily, we could probably learn about WebEx teams before this whole pandemic took place. But they are communicating all of their information and their resources through WebEx teams. And you can see, again, this is the team that was doing work around music that's iconic. They were getting their resources and they're saving them so other students can see the work that they are looking at or researching to answer that question. Next slide, please. Another success team was using OneNote. And I really thank our ed tech trainers on our campus to help our teams use the technology wisely. But you could see week one inquiry and you could see that what the students would write down if it was a primary resource. They would do a personal summary of all the questions that they are answering. And then they would write down their next natural questions through OneNote. So it's just a great display of the technology that we afford our students here in Mesa Public Schools and how we can use it in inquiry so that we can save the work as they are working towards that big goal statement. Next slide, please. Again, you can see the more examples of the communication that's taken place through OneNote. Next slide, please. You see, they used it pretty wisely. The sad thing about this whole project that we're working on is that these students were working really hard. Our teachers were working really hard. And then the pandemic occurred. They were working hard up to the spring break. They were supposed to finish it right around now or next week with the big goal statement. But right now, this has been put on pause as we are working through this new remote learning experience. Let's see here, this last one here, I just wanted to just say that and show that as we've demonstrated, our success teams are working as interdisciplinary teams with personalized learning. Teachers are collaborating, surrounding themselves around the student, engaging with the students. Their goal, the future for ASU student teachers to be a part of these teams, to learn how to design. Their goal of the future for ASU student teachers to be part of these teams, to learn how to design instruction with personalized learning. In times, we will also bring in community experts to answer questions that students may have leading to their big goal statement. And again, these community educators will not be brought in as a show and tell speech, but can answer the next natural questions that students have as a source of information in our community. Students in these classes will be able to communicate effectively and collaborate, engage in civil discourse when disagreement and dissent occur. And I want to thank these success teams publicly, these teachers, they're working really hard on this project to ensure that we have the personalized learning. These teachers believe in the next normal of education and are willing to develop the essential skills and attitude of the portrait of a graduate in Mesa Public Schools. All I have.
And as we're watching, we've got about 10 minutes, and so I know that Principal Greg Mendez has some amazing things to share about the work that he and his teams are doing at River View High School. And then we're going to follow up with Krista Adams, who has one slide, very powerful message to summarize our presentation today. So Greg, here you go.
Dr. Forless, thank you. I know we're pressed for time, so I will work quickly here. You can just go to the next slide here, we can get moving. But this slide really depicts what the setup looks like on our campus, and I've got the little picture to the side. You can see it says whole group, the maroon, the three teachers, 120 kids. That's really a good visual of what our campus looks like, and we're fortunate enough to be set up just logistically in general to run what Dr. Basile is calling the next normal. And so we run interdisciplinary courses, you can see a lot of similar between our school and Mr. Gilmore's program over in Westwood. So junior high model, shared rosters, but the part I really want to hone in on here is the teams for deeper personalized learning, that's really what we're set up for and what we're allowed to do. So go ahead and go to the next slide there. Our Y, you know, our at-risk teams generally have not been successful in that one teacher, one classroom model, the scripted schooling that goes on day to day, pack up and move every 50 minutes, et cetera, et cetera. But this allows us to reengage our kids into school and really live the portrait of a graduate and fulfill our NPS promise. And that's really what we're about every day we work with our kids. Next slide. So right here, I've got some pictures up, and I'll talk quickly about each one, but the one on the top left, you see all the kids there in the black shirt of the soccer ball. I have that in my office, and it always reminds me that these are kids. Yes, they've made mistakes, but when given the opportunity, have some agency, some choice in what they're doing, they can thrive, and that's always a reminder to me that that happened. Those kids wanted to have a soccer team, they wanted to play at another school. Shout out to Dr. Pillarover and Eva, we were allowed to set one up and do it, the kids fundraised, got some shirts. Knowing that they were motivated by something, it always reminds me that if we can set the school up and the classroom up correctly, kids will thrive. Couple of these pictures, the top ones there, you see the kids grouped up. So a couple of kids running across the field, that was a homestead act that our history teacher and art teacher had actually done. And it goes to show that, you know, school doesn't have to be in a classroom. Our schools and campuses are humongous. We need to utilize all those spaces for our kids, it gets them out of the classroom. You can see them working, you're going to see collaboration, critical thinking, problem solving there in the middle. The bottom left, you see some kids that were working on a final project for their art and soul studies class that was combined. You see them working in pairs, leveler, taping out their portraits, those kind of things. The bottom right, once again, collaboration with our kids, critical thinking, they're creating authentic work. There's not multiple choice tests, there's not sit down and take these notes. It's really about the work, and that's really what we try to provide through the inquiry model, through the art integration that we've been forced to be a part of. Next slide. Here's two examples of authentic work. The girl on the left there, you can see her, the drawing class was a portrait unit, obviously. And the history aspect was defining America, and so she ended up with George Washington, but she was allowed to choose what she wanted to draw, and then from there, she was able to present in her own manner. So she chose the portrait, at that point, she presented to the class and really showed her knowledge, and it really provided an opportunity for deeper and personalized learning, and that was really exciting to watch. On the right, you see, if you think back to that picture, that graphic that Mr. Gilmore said was the inquiry cycle. A little bow left to the side that said distillation, and this is a prime example of what that can look like. And this is actually a junior high class that we're summing up the major events leading up to, I mean, one of the wars that they were talking about. But they are the ones who said, hey, can we do this, can we draw this out? You know, you can see them, they're starting to draw flags, they've got little pictures there, they've got words. So basically, by watching the kids work together, you really get an understanding of what they know. And that's a great way to assess kids and really connect to some deeper learning. Next slide. Right here, you don't need to play this video, we're short for time, unless you want to play it, go for it, I'll talk over it. But this is a personalized assessment, this is a geometry student who's working on how we do math at our school. Kids are up, they're on the board, they're doing the work, they're creating the problems. So right here, he's explaining to this teacher his thought process in this mathematical concept. And so you can see him, he's drawing around, he's going to write out the formula. And as he gets going, the best part about this, at the very end, you can hear the light bulb go off on this student. He goes, oh, that's what I got to do on this problem. And so being able to have their thinking displayed is really, really important to us. He's not sitting down with a paper and 10 problems and look the same and hoping that he gets nine out of 10 right or eight out of 10 right. This allows him to really talk about his thinking going into this problem. You can see he's going, you know, six times 24, red, three, times about half, he knows what he does. And at the very end, it kind of clicks, and it's really, really cool to see. And he does that through questions, the teachers are there, they're asking questions. This here is a quick time lapse, go ahead, this is a build on the work that these kids did. So this is a collaborative, what we would call collaborative assessment. All these kids have been taught this skill, and now it's time to actually apply it in the real world. So they went in, they came to me with this project, and Mr. Mendez, can we do this? And I thought, you know what, that wall's bare, it needs something, let's find a place to display student artwork. And so they came, you can see them working together, materials, collaborating, attention to detail, critical thinking, being creative, being innovative, these are all the things we talk about. We're talking about the portrait of a graduate. And I always have to look through the lens, remember, these are some of our most at-risk kids, and they are fully engaged. And they're not just painting, they are learning the skill that they were taught, and that's what it ended up looking like. And now we have a place to display all of our student work on our school, and some of the kids have created, so a lot of agency there. It's something that we're very proud of, so next slide. And that, I went quick there, I know, but I hope you got a taste of what we're talking about with the art integration and the inquiry model of exploration and really take some ownership in the learning. And I'm going to pass it on to, I believe it is Dr. Holmes now, thank you.
Take us back quickly to, am I muted?
I hear you, Sean.
Can't hear me, okay, check. So I want to take us back to what Carol described as the anchor statement for the next normal, which is, what if we built an education workforce who could work as teams of educators with distributed expertise, who could provide all students with deeper and personalized learning and empower educators by developing new opportunities for role-based specialization and advancement? Here in Mesa Public Schools, the entry point into that work for us has been working with ASU to employ their new model for teacher preparation, known as professional pathways. We have talked about this before with you, the board. You will recall, this is the model in which we are hiring three student teachers as associate teachers to work with a lead teacher as opposed to, and to work effectively with two classes, what we would normally call two classes of students. That's really step one, though. Step two is to think more, to think larger about that and to try to build out what it would mean to truly get at a next educational workforce that would be school-wide and not necessarily isolated to just a grade level or two classrooms worth of students. So we've invited Krista Adams, principal at Stevenson Elementary, to talk a little bit about her experience. And we've invited Krista in particular because she's got three teams at Stevenson this year. And she has also done some work with folks at ASU to try to imagine how to take this teaming model that we've done with teacher prep and to figure out how that we might build that out as a school-wide model. So Krista, I will pass it over to you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Holmes, and thank you so much to the governing board and the superintendency for giving me an opportunity to highlight Stevenson and some of the exciting things that we're doing. It is truly an honor to be a part of the partnership and the great work happening with ASU and Mesa Public Schools. So I know we're short on time, so I'm just going to give you some stories to highlight our experience. First of all, like Dr. Holmes said, we got to host three associate teacher cohorts. And one of the values and the great learnings from hosting those student teachers was learning the value firsthand of teaming, particularly in our third grade cohort. It was very early on that that team of lead teacher and three student teachers became highly collaborative and cohesive. And what ended up happening is it just naturally and authentically spilled out through the entire grade level. So like what Dr. Basile is talking about, when you wrap these teams of educators around students and they have these varied experience or distributed expertise, it creates a more successful team. And you can see it in the classroom, and that's what we saw this year. So this third grade team now, instead of four teachers concerned about two classrooms, it became six teachers all talking about all of the students and owning them as if they were their own. And it was so exciting to see the impact on student achievement within the classroom. But I also have to know on the principal's side, watching my teachers be so highly satisfied and motivated in their own job experience. They were happy teachers, and it was because they were feeling successful. And in fact, my lead teacher told me out of all of her years of experience and in different districts as well, this was her best year as an educator, and she attributed it to this collaborative team model and watching the experience of the students succeeding and them succeeding as a team. And that's what we want, we want our teachers, we want our highly skilled teachers to stay in the classrooms, impacting our students, developing future educators, and impacting their teams. And so really, the logical next steps was to look at how could this teaming model move beyond just teacher preparation and how it spills over into grade levels? But could we actually look at a school model? So I was able to work with Dr. Holmes and a wonderful team from ASU. They came out to Stevenson a couple of times, and we just looked at our staffing, and we talked about what it would look like and what support would we need and how could we make it happen? And it just, I guess, imagining what this could mean for our students. Also, like Dr. Malloryne shared, I've been able to be a part of the work to more align our instruction to the portrait of the graduate, and that also excited my teachers. My teachers want to offer meaningful, relevant learning opportunities to our students, and we're excited by the idea that we could embark on this. So I think the two things really came together, the idea of you need these collaborative teams to offer this relevant personalized learning. And so next year, we're excited, our third grade team is going to launch the next education workforce model in third grade, where they share students and they're committed to making some big instructional shifts that impact student learning in meaningful ways. And we're also excited that we got to jump on board with Holly Williams in the master planning and even look at our learning environment and how we can make some physical changes to our learning environment that would match our learning outcome. So we have a team that's energized, they've been able to visit the Harris and neighboring school districts that are implementing this teaming model, they're meeting with ASU weekly, and I am just so honored and excited to be a part of this as we launch it next year.
Thank you so much, Krista, and thank you to the Mesa Public School team. I have to say, my heart is very happy. This is a lot of great hard work of focused leaders who are 100% dedicated to the future of our children. So I would like to say thank you. The clock is not our friend this evening, we are running quickly out of time. We have about six minutes before our general session starts, and I know you have a whole lot of questions. And would love to talk a little bit more about, are there some questions, some burning questions that the team can answer for you? And maybe this is something you would want to bring back in another work session to have more conversation?
Andy, Dr. Forless, yes, I think it would be a good idea to continue this study session. This study session was chock full of great information, and I have a variety of questions. But truly, my interest is so strong in all the things that each of these principals have presented today, as well as Dr. Basile. I'd like to connect the dots of what she was talking about with what we're doing in our schools. And I have, as I am sure all the other board members have, many, many questions. And so I believe we could take up another entire study session to go more in-depth and give these great principals an opportunity to share more information and answer our questions. And I'm sure we have questions for each one of them, would be my guess anyways, and we don't want to cut anyone short. We really, in my opinion, and all the board members can weigh in here, but I'm looking at the time, and we are scheduled actually on the board docs to begin the next session at 6:15. I would like to ask if it would be okay if we start that session a little bit later, maybe 6:30, if there would be a problem with that, so we could take a little bit of a break? Our technical people that we are so appreciative of all their work can maybe regroup a little bit if there's any issues going on. We have three fine, actually four with Holland Hall included, who are a team who have been working very, very hard on this production. And we want to make sure we give them enough time so that we can be in gear for the next session, which will be considered, could be considerably longer, we don't know as we get into it. So I'm going to ask my board members if anyone has any problem with continuing this study session at another time. And if you have any other questions that you want to ask quickly, so we can keep our commitment to those who are watching us when we start.
No, it's just so exciting, all of the possibilities that we have here. It deserves some more time, and so let's do that because this is very, very exciting information. Thank you, thanks for all the hard work, everybody, this is terrific.
Yes, very exciting.
Okay, I just want to thank everybody who presented today, and thank you for, just in that brief time, I learned a lot, thank you.
President Minor, this is Pete.
Yes.
If I could just briefly say thank you to Dr. Forless, our team of educators, extremely impressive work that they're doing. It just demonstrates a passion for leadership, a passion for forward thinking, looking for new ways and new experiences to engage our students in. There's great excitement around these discussions. I would expect as the weeks and months go on, that others who are part of our organization will be included and excited about the work that's being discussed here today and integrated into our schools. I would like to also say thank you to ASU. It feels like the perfect partnership that we have, that we have experts in the field, people who are equally passionate about the work we're doing with our students and the community, whether it be an inquiry instruction with Dr. Elkins, Tanton, or the arts inquiry with Jake Penholster in the new ASU building that's coming in in downtown Mesa. And of course, Dr. Basile, who has been part of the conversation and interactions with our learners, teachers, and leaders, and Dr. Forless, and really exploring new ways as discussed, the next normal of work. And the great work in our professional pathways with Dr. Holmes and several of our schools with the associate teacher program. How exciting to be part of teams as you try to conquer, try to explore, try to learn the very difficult job of being a teacher and a learner in our schools today. And of course, the Center for the Future of Arizona and Dr. Amanda Burke. And we've got these grants that are part of the Gates Grant, the Gierup Grant, the Smith Futures Grant. How exciting. How exciting. And I think it, it requires more time, more question, more insight from the board moving forward. So thanks to all of the work and the partnership with ASU. Thank you, President Miner.
Thank you, Dr. Lesser. Okay, with that, we are going to, I will ask for a motion to exit our study session and then we will return, if that's all right, at 6:30. And the audience out there, we should be back live at 6:30 and we will start our regular sessions. So do I hear a motion to exit out of the study session?
Kiana Maria Sears, make a motion to exit out of study session?
Second.
I'll say that again.
Second.
Okay.
A motion.
Thank you. I hear a motion to exit out of our study session from Mrs. Sears and a second by Mrs. Hutchinson. I will now take the vote, all in favor, and I will start with Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Mrs. Hutchinson.
Aye.
Mrs. Richardson.
Aye.
And Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
And Elaine Miner, aye. All right, so the motion is passed with a 5-0 vote that we will exit our study session. And we'll see everyone back here in about 15 minutes for the regular session. Thank you.
Mrs. Miner, this is, I just want to let all of the participants know that during the 15 minute break, we will put your microphones on mute. But if you turn your cameras off for those 15 minutes because the system will still be live. So if you recall, down on the bottom, you will see two, if you move your mouse around, the camera is the second on the left. It is black when your camera is on. When you click it, it'll turn red and your camera is off. And then when we come back, we'll just need you to turn your cameras back on.
Thank you, Helen.